Alabama Boys State, so.
Anybody to stand?
Wherever you're from.
If you want to use the PowerPoint there, you can do that.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jared Park. Recently, I just served on the Alabama Boys State staff. And one thing I was noticing while I was there, a lot of the staff members were talking about, you know, orientations, orienting these delegates, these young men and young women who were attending state, they would orient them from their area. So, you know, I knew someone from Birmingham, and he would bring all the delegates from that area, and he would orient them about, you know, what to expect, what's gonna happen, things you can run for, things you can do, the benefits of Boys State, the prestige of Boys State, overall State. And I was noticing that we, as DeKalb County, did not have an orientation. Because when I went, I kind of went in blind, had really no clue what I was expecting. But then when I got there, I obviously fell in love with it. And Boys State and Girls State, well, I can't really speak for Girls State, sorry, but Boys State did a lot for me as an individual, and I know it did a lot for all the individuals passed up going. And one thing I would really love to see is an orientation for the delegates we send into DeKalb County. There's a lot of opportunity. There's a place for everybody at Boys State. And I don't feel like we had the truest representation this year. Being on staff, I only saw delegates from Slovenia, Plainview, and Idr. I'm not sure if the rest of schools sent somebody, yeah, I just didn't run into them, or they didn't recognize me, I didn't recognize them. But I would really love to see the truest form of representation for DeKalb County. And I feel like one of the reasons we may have not had representations is that some of these kids didn't know what they're getting themselves into. It can be a very intimidating thing to travel two and a half hours to Tuscaloosa, sit there for a whole week, you're there for a whole week, from Sunday to Saturday, with 600 people, you have no clue who they are, and you're being thrown into this organization that you have no clue about. So I would really think that an orientation set up by the Board of Education would do a really good thing for both girls and boys. And so, I would just like to say that Boys State, for me, taught me not to be afraid, taught me not to be scared, intimidated, because, you know, when I first showed up, I was so terrified, because, you know, I'm from a smaller area, you know, some of these, some of these guys are from Birmingham, these big cities, these private schools, they're a lot more prepared than I was, I had no clue what was going on, and they did. But throughout the week, it kind of showed me that we're all on the same level. But it would've been nice to know beforehand, because, you know, I might have ran for a higher office, or I might have gotten a little bit more involved. So I definitely would love to see an orientation set up for both girls and boys State. So, with that, I will.
Who would do the orientation?
Good question. I would more than willing to do it myself, being on staff.
You got it.
I got it. All right. Being on staff, you kind of see the inner workings of it all, and what to expect on a even greater scale. So I would be more than willing to, you know, put a presentation, the PowerPoint, and present it to the delegates. And if there are any representation here that actually picks a delegate to go to Boys State and Girls State, I would love to talk to you guys, too, because when sending someone to Girls State or Boys State, you may not always want to send the most, you know, extroverted person, because they might not enjoy it as much as you think, and you also don't want to send Paula Deshaw as a person, because they're definitely not gonna enjoy it. But all in all, I just would really like to get DeKalb County more involved with Boys State, and I don't think DeKalb County has ever had a governor or lieutenant governor. And so I would really love for us to make history doing that. And again, I'm more than willing to get more involved with the students as well. So.
He was telling me that American Legion does that.
The American Legion, if you have a post in your county or your area, they typically do that, but I'm not sure if DeKalb County has one. If we do, it's obviously inactive with Girls State and Boys State, so I would definitely take up the reins.
How long would an orientation, I mean, how long?
How long would it last?
Yes.
Well, it's according to how in detail you want it to go, but I'd probably say no more than maybe 45 minutes to an hour. You know, I don't think it would be just super long. It's really just an annual thing. It would happen once a year. Because it always, Boys State, Girls State takes place, kind of like the last few days of May, first few days of June, is Boys State, and the following week is Girls State. So, you know, they're back-to-back. It's a great week. The orientation, you know, would be short. I have a couple of friends on staff that have done it before, and are also willing to help. One is a lawyer in Birmingham, a very successful one at that, and another one works for NASA at Huntsville. So, you know, they're very prestigious leaders of society, and they're also willing to help us as well.
What I was thinking, too, is that I don't know what timeframe that they're chosen, do you know how they're chosen? Like, I know the faculty or administration.
I think, well, kind of what I think, and I'd be glad to sit in the appointment in my office and talk a little bit more about the process, but I think possibly what I think would be a good idea is to deal with our counselors and kind of talk with them about the selection process, or informing students about this opportunity they have at Boys State and Girls State, and letting them, the counselors, administrators, be involved in some of that, you know, nominating type form, and then once we get a core group that may be interested in it, allowing, you know, Jared to kind of present some of his experiences and information orientation type program to them, and then see if that's something they're still interested in. If it is, would be great, and we may have a little bit more in-depth about exactly what's going on. Because I know you run for these offices, you're a county council, you got all these different things.
By the time Wednesday comes around, the whole thing is ran by the students themselves.
Last year, Collinsville had a young lady who went to Girls State, and she had to write a bill, you know, to pass before the legislature there. Her mother, Collins, said, "We need some help passing a bill or writing a bill," and I said, "Well, great. Y'all come on up here, and we'll work on this." But it is, it really gets your mind working, and it's a great opportunity to meet some other folks and be involved in a great organization, a great opportunity. I think this is something that we need to look at, and I think, you know, you serving as perhaps a liaison, a state liaison here locally in DeKalb County would probably be very beneficial to our students. So I think sometime next little bit, we'll get together, and we'll talk a little bit more about how we maybe want to set this up in the future, if you're willing to do that, which appears you are.
That's all right.
Well, I appreciate you coming and talking with us today, sharing your experience, and willingness to serve the DeKalb County students through this role.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. You want to give us a brief update on the Geraldine property?
Sure. The Geraldine property there is Mr. Satterfield. He donated a pretty big bit of money to allow us to purchase some property that joins the school campus football field. It's been a long process. The people who own that have been very private, they've got some trust that you have to go through. We're starting to get somewhere, I think, we're right here at the last leg up. I spoke to Sam Phillips, I believe it was Tuesday morning, at the Hilltop Convenience Store station. I went there to get a biscuit, and he was eating a biscuit, and we talked. That's what business is done, I guess. But anyway, Mr. Phillips, he said that he didn't have it on his schedule or the time to do it this week, but that he hoped to get out there this upcoming week. So hopefully next week, he can get that survey, get it all drawn up, and then we can hopefully that's just the last leg. I think we're right there within arm's reach of getting that finalized and then everything for it. It has been a process, but the attorneys and everybody's been working as, about as diligently as we can, and just with all the available very, very private documents, it's just kind of taken us a while to get personal hurdles.
I know we have to go on the board setting to do this, but we give, instead of, when was our next meeting, we were saying about, middle of July, if that comes before, we give Dr. Barnett permission to go ahead and take care of that for us. Instead of having to wait, we make it, if it comes before, then I can, unless something has to do with me, but I'm just asking. Do we give him authority to, you know, I know we have to prove it at the end, but do we give him authority to go on, instead of having to wait another three weeks to, I think that'd be exactly what you're asking. Yeah, for him to just assign. Yeah, for him to take care of what we get on, because what the deal is, Mr. Satterfield's got a guy with a voter's line up ready to clear it and get it ready for those boys to practice.
They've already paid for the land. He's already, the purchase price of the land, he's already wrote us a check for the purchase price.
Mr. Satterfield's gonna give us the money. But I just thought to speak things up, we could give Dr. Barnett permission to go on with it, instead of howling and everything, we made it, you know, of course, I know we had a thread together, but. Yeah. Add that to it. Hope I understood it. Okay, work. Good. I know several of you have probably gotten some requests from the senior baiters. I think we did a lot of plan meetings, and I'll think, but most of it's geared to the junior baiters, so you want to talk about the seniors.
The National Bait Club Convention, of course, gearing up here real soon, and so everybody's gonna be going. Of course, it costs a lot of money to do that. We hope to be able to, we're gonna be able to help support these clubs as they go to convention. We're talking about, just providing some donations. I think we've typically done about $1,500 per club in the past, and so we're looking at doing that as well again this year for our junior and senior baiter clubs. We had talked with the junior baiter clubs, saying we're doing some creative fundraising this year. We're going to support them in a different way, but they wound up raising funding and weren't able to. So we're able to help themselves a little bit more than we had anticipated, so it's great for that part. But we would like to give them some funding to help support their trip to Orlando. I know it costs a lot of money and a lot of time, and we're gonna do that, so we're gonna help with that. That's about all I got on that. As far as our network upgrade, we're working on that. They started pulling fiber and Geraldine, and started working on all that, so that's kind of going on roughly about two weeks at each side, I think is about what they're saying, so we've got the schedule out. I was presenting to you guys at the previous board meeting, so we're working diligently through that, and Mr. Cochran with Howard, he's the engineer that's helping us with that. He's come out, and he's been a great job communicating with me back and forth, and with the technology department as far as where we are. I actually had, I talked to him on the phone probably three times yesterday, and we texted back and forth earlier today, so I'm very thankful for that communication, that line of what's going on with us. That's real good, so hopefully we can get that moving forward. We've talked about updating some of our services through Google services as well. Brian, a couple of folks joined, went to Google training last week, trying to kind of talk about migrating our emails and different things over to Google as well, so that we can just have a little bit more uniform system. Most of our school districts have done that or are doing that, but that's something that we're looking at as well. That's just a couple of things. Also, you have a package here, I did put this on here, but I do want to mention that. Beginning next week, for a couple of days, we're gonna have a leadership retreat with a lot of our principals, supervisors, and teachers that have participated in the Beacon Academy, our leadership academy, that we're gonna invite them to be a part of this, and it's just gonna be a very good time. We're gonna have some great, you've got the schedule there in front of you. It's gonna be really good. We've got a bookstore that has led into this, with Mr. Todd Whitaker. He's written a book about, you know, 18 habits of highly effective principals and school leaders, and so we're looking forward to having him there. There's a whole lot of things that are involved. I encourage you guys to come make a few sessions if you can. I know you try to fit in your schedule, but we're looking forward to that. I want to thank all of, Mr. Mayfield, Mr. Thompson, spent a lot of time working with us, and Mr. Phillips, and Ms. Whitaker, everybody. I appreciate their work on helping put all of this together, so I think it's gonna be an exciting time to, of learning and self-improvement for myself and in our staff, so I'm excited about it.
Mr. Mayfield.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna be at both, I'm gonna be at both meetings, I'm gonna be there. If you don't mind, tell the board, in about two minutes, I'll give you two minutes, which sessions they need to come.
The two, the two most needed sessions is the one with Burke Enterprises and the SREB session on the second day. The third, third in line, would be with, with our school improvement activities that are listed in there under the Jody Jacobs sessions. Those are with Jody Jacobs and Dr. Whitaker. And I realize that none of you, except for possibly Jeff, has been able to block off some time, might be able to meet all of those, but if some of you can hit each of those sessions, it would be great. Dr. Burke is going to support us in the development of a strategic improvement plan, a five-year plan, or that's our hope. And so we would like for you guys to be there, so y'all could hear a little bit about that process. We've also been lacking an instructional framework for many years. We've stepped back away from that, and really never had anything strong in the secondary. Not that we haven't had strong things going on in secondary, but in regards to an instructional framework, we've, we've really kind of been left to make our own discoveries within, within the standards, and SREB's gonna support us in that. It's gonna be a strong middle school and secondary initiative. Most of my time in this position, as a counselor, as a principal, and as a teacher, initiatives have been case six, so a middle school and secondary initiative, it's a good move.
Good, good. Thank you. DEA, Espo, anything that y'all want to cover?
I just want to go back to the Boys State.
Yes.
A side kid over there, said we did not receive that information last year, so in this year, we got it too late, so that's why we didn't send anybody. So, you know who sent, she said, it comes directly from Boys State, but we didn't get it, so that may be why there were no other schools that he saw there, because they didn't get it.
This is why we're hiring you in charge. There's not a lot of pay benefits associated with that. In effect, this is, this is, I know, you know, it may have had many people go in the past, and we may have gotten off some mailing lists or some things like that. I think that's why perhaps being, having a state liaison kind of educating, facilitating, making dialogue may be advantageous for us, I think.
By the way, my son spent a week at Boys State. He thoroughly enjoyed it, so I'm an advocate for it. I think it's a great job, so. All right, we're gonna take this two minutes, we'll get ready for the tour meeting here, starting at 11:30. Thank you.
We would like to come to you with a humble heart, ladies. Thank you God for your blessings. Pray to God that you're handled with honor proceedings that we're making, that you're handled with honor students, and that we'll have the summer keeping safe and secure.
Let's play. Asian, salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was on, I just want to trigger it. Okay, good. It's called meeting to order. There's a, the agenda in front of you. As we talked in the work session, there's probably one item that we want to add to that, and that's for the permission to execute the purchase of the Geraldine property, so I'm gonna add that under, is that okay? Is that a good place to put that? All right, so any other changes we need on the agenda? Motion, in a second, to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you have a copy of the minutes for our last meeting. I'll take a motion in a second to approve those, please.
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, before we move on to our financial statements, I think we've got some, DEA has some new officers this year, and if you would like to introduce Ms. Bowden, go right ahead.
I'm Devin Bowden. I know y'all love me. Probably more than you, but. This is Teresa Smith. She'll be Vice President, and I just put our contact information on paper, so everyone needs to call us or invite anything, we'll go out and see what we can do. And I know they don't hear, our term started June the 1st, and will run May 31st next year, and she will take over June 1st next year, and then we won't know who those will be after, we'll know for election next year. I just want to include her in a lot of things, too, so she's not completely lost, kind of like I'm gonna be for a year. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Mary Jo is the president of Espo this year. I guess we could say maybe congratulations to y'all, or we're sorry, or.
condolences.
But anyway, thank you, and I think maybe you'll help your officers maybe at the next meeting, so we can.
Probably so.
Okay, that'd be great. Good. Okay, thank you. Okay, school financial statements, and you got the bank, rec, and our bills and accounts. We need to take care of all these financial matters, so if you have a chance to look at that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve that.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There is a budget amendment in your package, gentlemen. This is something that is pretty well-studied. We have to do each year, I think it's each year, and we have to do it anyway, but there's some, there's some federal and state items that are added, and some carryover funds that we have to just approve to put those in the budget, so this is official amendment. If you've had a chance to look at it, I hope Mr. Gooper sent that to you several days ago. So we need to go ahead and approve that, so I'll entertain a motion in a second to do that.
Make a motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, item number five, nonrenewals and terminations.
Gentlemen, I do have one nonrenewal to present to you. I recommend the nonrenewal slash termination of Mr. Kyle Cochran, special education teacher at Valley Head.
Okay, heard the superintendent's recommendation. I have a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion's in a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, retirements, resignations.
I have three items here bringing for you. I have the recommendation that we accept the retirement of Mr. David Uptain, principal at Crossville High School, that is effective August 1. Due date, okay, that'd be fine.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Gentlemen, I recommend that we accept the retirement of Miss Stacy Pope, elementary teacher at Geraldine, and that will be effective July 1.
Okay, heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
In a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Just want to say, hate to see her leave. She's been with us for many years, great teacher, good role model. I wish her the best. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, I recommend we accept the resignation of Mr. Doug Hany, secondary English PE teacher, that is effective June 30th.
Heard the recommendations, here a motion. Make a motion, should make a motion in a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Beverly, thank you. Any discussion?
What's going with that?
Test planning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You can do the three leads about Mrs. Kennedy.
Gentlemen, I recommend we accept the, we, the absence of Miss Stacy Dole, for elementary secretary of claiming, Miss Andrea Hastings, school nurse at Moon Lake, and Mr. Ray Evans, maintenance worker at facility.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Transfers. Do we have, have we, do we, all get it? All get it? Still all going?
All good. Gentlemen, I recommend we accept the transfer of Miss Angela Johnston, CMP worker, to CMP Assistant Manager at Geraldine. This next one's a swap kind of, I recommend we transfer Miss Sarah Goodwin, pre-k teacher at Plainview, to elementary counselor at Plainview, and Miss Selena Smith, elementary counselor, pre-k teacher at Plainview. And then Miss Judith Relford, CMP worker, to Idr, the CMP worker at Selena.
All right, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Placements. Let's do those second.
All right. I recommend we place this Stephanie Faulkner, secondary language arts teacher at Geraldine.
Heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Casey Gass, secondary math teacher at College.
Heard the recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Gentlemen, I recommend we place Miss Sarah Ardrill as attendant finance teacher at district wife.
Heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make the recommendation we place this Jody Jacobs as instructional supervisor at central office.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? What, we have some great applicants. I'm sure what stood out above everybody.
Well, we had some really good applicants. We talked to a lot of folks, basically her experience in a school improvement position at both the state level, the State Department of Education, as well as the district level, the things, when we talk about some of these initiatives, we talked about SREB, that we talked about that instructional framework that we may use for, she has been on the boots on the ground with that process, all reading, went through the NBC, LDC, and career readiness for a program of that. She is very familiar with both elementary and secondary curriculum. She has a secondary curriculum background, but she also works just hands-on in both areas. Just, just, really just, we were kind of run away by the things that she brought to us. And we had some great applicants, great.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the placement of Miss Vanessa Marquin, secondary math teacher at Crossville High School.
Okay, heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, I recommend we place Mr. Stephen Goff as an elementary teacher at Henry Jr. High School.
Okay. Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Support personnel, I recommend we place Mr. Rodney Hamon as bus driver at Valley Head High School.
Heard the recommendation, very much.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I recommend we place Miss Brandy Chapman as a six-hour school worker. That's a split duty, four hours at Crossville Middle and two hours at Crossville Elementary.
Heard the recommendation, do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Miss Leanna Porter Faulkner as attendant school nurse at Plainview.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend we place Mr. David Bailey as elementary custodian at Moon Lake.
Heard the recommendation, is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On the contracts, do A, and then you can do the other. On the contracts, do a and then you can do the other.
On the contracts, we've got a supplemental contract represented. Uh, this is a local supplemental contract, uh, for some, for some of our administrative work. He'll manage. I recommend we refer to that contract.
Motion carries. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
The recommendation stand. Motion carries. All right, you put those up for a deal.
I recommend we approve the, uh, following, uh, contracts from Mr. Rebecca Griffin, Rebecca Griffin, excuse me, that psychometric testing of IDAB. I recommend we approve the occupational therapy, evaluation, my, my tongue's getting tight, evaluations and OT services through IDAB. Uh, Twin Acres Physical Therapy, physical, for physical therapy through IDAB, and Miss Margaret Brown Clerical in Asal Oak.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Baver, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The summer workers, you can do both.
Here we got two summer workers. I recommend, uh, we approve the contract, following contracts for summer workers, Mr. Benson Mason, uh, Rue Hamble Jr. High, and Mr. Will Crane at Collegeville High.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion's your second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eleven there is, uh, principal contracts.
I'll break these apart for you. Item A, I, uh, recommend we approve the, uh, principal contract of Miss Carrie Lance at, uh, Moon Lake Elementary School.
Heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion. Your second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Both of these are coming off the two-year probation period and getting the full three-year.
Sure. Sure. These are three-year contracts.
Okay.
And I plead that probation case on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Make the motion. We approve the, uh, make the recommendation. We approve Mr. Tony Richards, Plankton High School.
Okay, heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Your second.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, order to superintendent's recommendations.
Basically, what we got from this first out, uh, in your, it's in their patent, twelve acre patent. It is the Benton Communication Educational Association, which is a 501(c) in Benton, it was formed in two thousand. Uh, and basically, they are willing to donate the installation and equipment for Plankton High School ham radio stations, uh, station. It's an eighty-foot brick standing tower we erected next to the agribusiness building. Uh, obviously, all codes gonna be involved. Mr. Jimmy Killian's gonna help provide a lot of the, uh, construction with that. And they're gonna donate all the equipment and installation for that to be put on our, uh, campus there, uh, for students to get their training with this. There's also an added benefit that could come into play for us, uh, with, with some other things, uh, communication, uh, during storm that, and all the, and all the different things. So this is something they're willing, they're making the donation, donating all the equipment and everything like that. Uh, I recommend we approve that.
So. I forgot what it's called. Six. Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion? Second. Second. Any discussion? Communication is very important. Those are important to our academy. We have those storms that, uh, any extra communicating is definitely beneficial.
I agree with that. Uh, in that, basically, to, to know that all that was extremely expensive, basically, all they asked for us was that we have a school sponsor to oversee that. And Mr. Hall agreed to do that, no cost. Uh, but he also, they did request that we, uh, install a chain link fence around that area, which should be a very small expense compared to what they're doing. So I recommend you guys, uh, would go ahead and, uh, get some beds to install the chain link fence around that area. We'll stay there for you.
Okay, wait a minute. We, we got a motion. I got a motion. Second on the floor to approve doing that. So we, we gotta go.
I'm on my way.
That's okay.
I gotta hit myself.
It's all part of the, part of the deal. We gotta approve that. I guess we're.
I agree. I agree.
All right. All right, to the, for the donation, installation, the equipment, doing the radio station and all that, we have a motion. Second, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we can talk about the things.
Sketch with this code close to lunchtime. You can't lie for sure. Let's, let's go ahead. I would recommend we install that chain link fence around the ham radio tower once they complete installation.
Okay, all right, you've heard the recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Your second. 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 Any discussion? That's a sense it's gonna be our only cost in this day, so I figure that's pretty good. That's pretty good for us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, just wanna honor and recognize there, uh, the ALSD, who school librarians have what they call a screencast challenge where they're encouraged to showcase instruct, their instructional partner role and how they serve, uh, teachers and the community with students and everything. Uh, they created how-to videos, uh, and we had two winners from DeKalb County in that screencast challenge. Uh, so I wanna honor them. Uh, Miss Rosemary Adams, uh, who's at, uh, Crossville Middle, and Miss Addie Thomas, uh, who's at Outer High School. There were, uh, two out of the, two out of the, the three winners in the state were from DeKalb County for that. So that was, uh, that was really good. So I went to honor and recognize them for that accomplishment. We do have some policy updates there on item D, uh, that we need to present to you guys. Uh, these are, uh, there's one, the first one there, A, is voluntary, uh, religious, uh, expression. That is state code. That's something that has been brought, uh, to our attention. This is state code. The auditor found it. And they, they, uh, that was one of their findings that that's something that the law has passed and this is the law, and they require for it to be in our policy manual as such. And so basically, this isn't, uh, anything other than just adopting basically what, uh, law prescribes that we have to have within our policy. So.
And what we need to do on this since the exit conference, which we need to stay, is to set aside rules, go ahead and approve this particular policy for them and, uh, get that out of the way. So am I correct in that?
That would be, that would, that would probably benefit the auditor did. That was one thing they pointed out. And so we do have our efficacy conference. And so if we can say that we want to ahead and fix that finding, uh, I shouldn't say finding, but if we can say we fix that, that would probably go along well for us.
Yeah. So to do that, I need a motion. Second, set aside the rules to approve this one.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we need to, so you're recommending that we go ahead and approve this.
Right.
In the in the policy. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to add this policy.
I'll make a motion.
Your second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right.
Uh, we do have, uh, another item there, a policy that would, it, it, basically, the State Department of Education has updated, uh, their deal enrollment requirements. Uh, a couple of years of administrative, Alabama administrative code had a one-to-one, uh, one deal enrollment candidate for one high school. They've come out with additional guidance on that. And, and they put it in there and it's, it's not exactly what we had thought. But basically, what I'm asking here is just simply add the language, uh, for what the State Department of Education, what they're directing, so to speak, just to add that into our policy book. As, as, so that we make sure that we have that aligned with what they will accept and look like.
Okay. Is that one?
Turn it later.
Lay it on the table. Okay, and so, and what about the, uh, what about the grades?
Yeah, item C, we had some confusion. Obviously, this past year, we looked at, um, when we have our balance out and class rank, in our student policy, it handled, there were, at one time, there was conflicting information. One said five decimal points, one said two decimal points. At this point in time, they both say five points, but through looking at it, there was some confusion over when that was actually approved and passed by the board. We wanted to go ahead and present that. We couldn't, we couldn't find that to happen. So we wanted to present that to you, uh, gentlemen, uh, so that we can get what's actually, we want to get that corrected and get that.
So since you're being C, we're laying on the table for the thirty days to approve it now.
Right.
Now, can I ask a question on those, on the deal enrollment? Uh, that, that's basically what we're doing now, correct?
Well, the, the state.
Changing what we're actually doing.
The State Department of Education, and I met with, uh, Dean Grace and, uh, Ms. Miller over at Northeast and, uh, Jackson Canyon Superintendent. I've spoken with him, spoken with Melissa Shields and, uh, Ms. Manus and Brian and Jason. We've all been involved with. Originally, they talked about a one-to-one and we set our policies on kind of what we would accept and what would count for Northeast in conjunction with them. Well, State Department has since come out with a guidance where what classes you have to take in, uh, college to count for high school. And, and some of it's similar, very similar, but there are some changes there. And that's basically what the State Department's gonna allow for us to count, the deal enrollment to count as high school courses, uh, which kind of, I mean, we really can't get around that because that's what they're authorized to do. Uh, but it's basically just following the guidance from, or the directives of the State Department of Education.
Along with that, I had, I had a parent, uh, calling about, um, their child taking deal enrollment for the, the upcoming fall and it's my, and I'm, I'm not sure what her policy is and, uh, but, but their question was that their principal had told them that they could not drive to Northeast, you know, during school. Is there a policy against that? I don't know.
And I don't believe there's a policy against that that I'm aware of. We, we want to, you know, we want to support our, our students if we have, if you've taken these.
Of course.
They're, they're very advantageous for a student to get involved. In fact, oftentimes, uh, taking deal enrollments will be a part of, of a scholarship application. Where if you've shown that you've taken some deal enrollment courses and you've proved that you've got the attitude and commitment to complete college courses, that oftentimes bodes well for them in scholarship. So we wouldn't necessarily want to do that. Uh, you know, I know there have been some issues and we were addressing those issues with students who, uh, transport. And, and obviously, when we look at our county geographically, some schools are very close to Northeast where they might take class. Some have a thirty-minute drive and that may, uh, negatively affect them with their home school class. So, you know, each situation is a little bit different, but, uh, we want to work to support those students.
I think this was actually a Plankton parent who had told me about it and suggested that they wanted, I forget what the course was, but, but wanted their child to take the, the deal enrollment, or take the course at Northeast actually. And was told that they could not transport. So, and if it's a policy, it's a policy. But if it's not, then that may be something that we would have.
Something we can work with. We'll work with the student, uh, parent and.
And I, I don't know the situation.
Sure, sure.
Other than that.
But we can certainly, we can talk back. So we want to provide as much opportunities for our students to advance, uh, and, and take the most rigorous course what they can on the campus and through other opportunities that we're willing to.
Okay.
And I'm, I mean, on the class rank, I'll ask one question right there. So, so I know we had one that went after two decimals and one that goes after five decimals. And if one goes after five decimals, I guess is there, is, I guess the reason for that is so we won't have two in that?
It, it would create a much less likelihood, decrease the likelihood of having a tie. Now, it won't eliminate it, obviously, because that's happened to a decimal point at times here in DeKalb County recently. Uh, but it would definitely eliminate, produce the likelihood.
I'm just wondering, uh, you know, is that, is that good or bad? I mean, if, if someone is within, you know, I guess that's ten thousandth of a point. That's pretty close.
It is pretty close.
I would almost like that's a tie for within, you know, within a hundredth of a point, I would think we're, we're tied. So I, I, I don't know, maybe that, that, I understand it. I guess we're just, we want to have.
We just need some consistency. We need some consistency for you what we may have.
I mean, I would prefer it not be to five, but I guess you could go out and infinite. We could just say infinite until we.
Ten numbers out.
Yeah, unless they're exactly the same number of points are exactly the same. I guess you could have that situation. Anyway, that's.
Or we could operate you just to pick the one you say.
I'm not gonna play that presentation for this one.
Yeah, I'd say if it goes to five, let's just go with infinite. Otherwise, I would say two or three would be, that's okay. So if they're that close, that's a tie. So.
And, and we do want to honor students. And we're honoring students. They are excelling at this. And so I, I understand your point as well.
Yeah, I'd hate for one, you know, you'd have one at a ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine-nine-five and one at nine-nine-nine-nine-four and one at nine-nine-nine-nine-three. And then, you know, that one, I don't, that seems off the clock.
Well, it, it, it is. It is. And, you know, I, I, I see that and it's basically virtually a tie.
Yeah.
Until it's your baby, I guess. It is not a tie. But I understand what you're saying. I really appreciate it. I do understand.
Okay, uh, item D.
Item D, gentlemen, last month, Mr. Bell was gracious enough to present, uh, some finances and information regarding the, uh, virtual school and where we have been and what have you enrollment in, uh, lunchtime.
Yep, all, all lunchtime yourself.
And so, uh, gentlemen, basically, I, I, we've looked over that and we evaluated where we were with our enrollment. And, uh, I would like to recommend that we enter, uh, in a twelve-month lease, uh, with, with the facility building that you have, uh, for a virtual school. But to, our ability to house the virtual school program for the DeKalb County schools. Uh, basically, we've talked a little bit about this and we want to, uh, use this as an opportunity to advertise what we're doing. Most people in DeKalb County, I would say, don't even realize that we have a virtual school program. Uh, this is gonna be an opportunity for them to, to promote it, to advertise it. And it's not for everybody. Certainly not for everybody, but there is a portion of our, uh, students here in DeKalb County that could greatly benefit from that for various reasons. Would it be acceleration? Would it be, uh, just some life circumstances? So I would like to give that an opportunity to, to, to thrive and flourish. Uh, so I would recommend for at least twelve months, we enter into a lease, uh, to, to house, house that program and then we'll reevaluate that and what we want, what we want to do to go there. I make that recommendation.
Heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's your second.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Don't get any.
Do it right.
I think this should help. Talk to Mr. Bell about whether they'll go to warehouse and all that.
Well, there's no doubt that last year, uh, of this school year, we just finished up. Uh, they made the most of it. They worked hard. Uh, we, we learned a lot from it, uh, from both of, uh, just the organization of it, uh, to the curriculum of it and all that kind of stuff. And we, we did. We had a lot of it here. A lot of times, sometimes it was in this room. Sometimes it had to be out the warehouse because this was occupied. That's just not, uh, a great situation for us to have, especially when we're coming back to school in August and it's gonna be hot out there and, uh, kids need a good place to go. And so I think this will be a good place and, uh, a reasonable rate and, and I believe there are.
I like the idea of the twelve-month lease and seeing longer term because, you know, we, we want it to be successful and we want it to be, to pay for itself and if it, hopefully, it will. You know, if it doesn't, then we'll just have to reevaluate it, uh, maybe on a annual basis until, until it can finish.
And that's what I wanted to present something to you. I didn't want, I didn't want to ob, you know, obligate us to, uh, a long-term lease, but I did want us to get an opportunity. We, uh, hopefully, we'll come back next year and, you know, we can say, I just didn't have a special, maybe move on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, we've got some, uh, pretty important places coming up in the next little bit, but, uh, it's time sensitive. They're all important, but there's some, some that are kind of time sensitive on getting started. So I'd like to ask permission to place, uh, pending future board approval, a couple of positions that we have there concluding over the next few days and week.
Okay, your motion. Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, don't get out of the chief there. They're very, very.
Uh, gentlemen, as we mentioned earlier, the current status of the drilling property, we don't want to hold up progress. Mr. Sarah does already, uh, dispersed payment to us for the property. And we've been working on that for quite some time. I would like for, uh, Louis District, uh, Phillips and everything gets finished. We, I'd like to go ahead and ask for your permission to go ahead and, uh, sign off and make a contract and finish out the purchase of that property.
Okay. Heard the recommendation.
Make a motion.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, fourth.
Do we have any, any renovations going on as far as, in, in school during summer, any type of things? What, what kind of things?
Well, there's, there's a lot going on. Mr. Butts, I believe, is, is here right now. We got, we got a lot of projects going on. Obviously, um, the network upgrade is a, a major one. Uh, at Selena High School, the, uh, field house had some major leaks. I mean, it was major leaks to the community.